All right, we're gonna start this evening out with a really special recognition of our Unified Cheer Squad. And to handle that recognition, we're gonna turn it over to Caitlin Willis.
Hi, thank you for inviting us and having us here tonight. I am gonna talk as little as possible and hand it over to this beautiful adapted Unified Cheer Squad that we have. So I really briefly just wanna thank the brain children behind our children, the brain adults behind this wonderful cheer squad. It's Lori Shortridge and Erin Mathis. They are two of our paraprofessionals in the district and absolute inclusion experts. And we, it's such an asset for us to have them in the district with us. And it's also fitting that it is Paraprofessional Appreciation Week. So, thank you again. I will turn it over to the cheer team to share a little bit about their experiences in the cheer squad. And if you have any questions for them.
All right, okay, public speaking, not my forte. Just gonna say that right now. I'm Lori Shortridge, this is Erin Mathis, my partner in crime. We just wanna thank everybody for giving us this opportunity to bring recognition to this awesome group of girls. We've been working together since the beginning of this year with this squad. So it's been pretty exciting. We wanna thank everybody in administration, the teachers, the parents, everybody who really helped make this happen. Because it was definitely, takes a village to get this group going. We have been lucky enough to cheer at all of the home adapted sports events so far this year. Soccer was our first, we even got to cheer at their state tournament where they did take fourth. So we were pretty excited about that. We're now cheering for the adaptive floor hockey team. And we are actually going to the Unified Basketball Tournament next week on Wednesday. So we've been really excited to have all these opportunities to get out and show our student body what these kids can do. We've been using adapted equipment, which we're gonna give a little demonstration of right now. As you can see in the picture, we have letters that would be on the back of the wheelchairs. And then we have adaptive buttons for the students who are nonverbal. They are able to use a button. We're just gonna do one and then we'll show you our thing. All right, and then we of course would have all the rest of the letters of ponies. And it would be a holler back cheer. So the audience gets involved, the fans get involved, it's really fun to see that. And then each student has a letter that gets flipped up on the back of their chair. And then Ava has a button there that we use once we get all the letters called. You have it turned on Ava?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna have Anella help with that one? All right, Anella.
Let's go, boys, let's go!
All right. Big, big participation with that when we're at the games. We do it at whatever halftime might be, usually between the second and third period of the games. So yeah, we're talking, the trust club is actually talking about trying to get us to go cheer at some of the regular ed, like basketball and stuff like that, so. Just trying to make it all work. Yeah, so I would like to introduce our squad that we have here. This isn't everybody, we do have quite a large squad. But I'm gonna have everybody introduce themselves. This is Cameron Hamburg.
I'm Ava Willis.
I'm Abby Kowalski.
That is Anella Ruskus.
Oh, I'm Ally Wright.
I'm Olivia Metzelski.
I'm Maddie Savical.
All right, and we have quite a few other girls who weren't able to make it tonight because they are playing in other sporting events themselves as well. But, so yeah, we're very excited for this group. They're really getting a lot of recognition and it's very exciting, it's very exciting. We hope to continue to grow this group, get more support at the adapted sporting arena, get these athletes some more recognition.
And just have a good time?
And have a good time.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming in. I wanna make sure that the board has an opportunity to ask you any questions. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
So what, what got you going to do this?
Yeah. Well, every year we try to... The brain! My brain, that's what gets us going. Every year I like to try to find a new venue for inclusion and opportunities for these kids to just get to know each other, get to know how the world can work in a little different ways. So this year was Cheer Squad. And we had a really good turnout for that, a lot of interest. And as I said, we keep adding more and more cheer girls on. So far just girls, someday we might have some boys, but we haven't had any boy interest yet. Yeah, so every year I try to come up with something new for the year that is just an inclusive way to make sure everybody's included. And everybody gets to know the unique ways that people can communicate and participate.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. Yeah, Beth?
I mean, I, that article that was on the front page of the Pioneer Press.
I know.
I was so proud to be a pony that day. And I just, I'm sure that you all were just, Mary Divine just did a great job, I thought.
Wonderful.
You know, I'm just so grateful that you guys got the recognition that you deserve. I mean, you just, yeah.
Yes, did.
Wonderful, wonderful thing here, so, very proud of you.
Thank you. Dr. Kelsenberg?
Yes, so I'm very proud of it too. And one of the highlights in my existence here was a couple of years ago when the unified basketball team is in the state championship versus Minnetoka down at Target Center, and I got to bring them there. But what was, I'm also very proud of is we had a student section, at least a couple hundred people. They went there and they went there, they'd sneak off into town or something like that. And they were cheering heartily for our team. Stillwater has the backing for our, our students, and that was very nice to see, so.
Maybe you can drive us, oh, to Orno next week.
My basketball lecture's on Wednesday.
Dr. Hopper?
Thanks, I'm just curious if I could hear from some of our cheer squad, if you guys have any good memories from this year or special experiences or things that you've learned? Or favorite cheers, just to hear a little bit from the students.
Well, I think my favorite cheer is when we all raise up the signs. Because not only does it get the audience involved, but it is a bigger display of the cheer to show the team that we support them.
Cool.
Actually, my favorite memory is probably the soccer tournament because we had a lot of the people in the stands cheering as well, and it just like kinda created a great feeling.
I think it's just fun to be able to include everyone, especially the girls in the wheelchairs who can't play certain sports, adapted sports. So I think it's fun to be able to have everybody included.
Some important, such important work. Yes, Dr. Kelsenberg?
One more comment too. I went to a couple band concerts earlier this year, and I credit, I believe Dennis Lindsay, who incorporated you into those band concerts, you were your up front, you had your part, and everything worked so smoothly. It was really nice to see.
Yes, Dennis Lindsay has been a wonderful opening and welcoming, trying to get somewhat of a unified band situation going as well. It's been really cool.
Well, thank you all so much for coming in. We're so proud of what you're doing and everything you're accomplishing. And you make Stillwater area public schools look amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here. This evening, we do not have any speakers sign up for public comment. So, because we will call our meeting to order. Joan, roll out. Dr. Hopper?
Here.
Dr. Kelsenberg?
Here.
Dr. Lawrie?
Here.
Dr. Kielander?
Here.
Sarah Shorten?
Here.
All right, let's dance to the flag.
United States of Minnesota, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to go ahead and make the motion to approve tonight's agenda. Can I get a second? Dr. Kornany with a second. All those in favor, vote for the tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're down one student representative tonight, but we have Jenna here to give the student report.
Perfect, so I'm just gonna update you guys on our Student Council last week planning. And if you guys are unfamiliar with last week, it's every week we have to celebrate the student body and diversity and inclusion. So right now, we have tons of different speakers and different acts coming into Stillwater during the week, all throughout the week. And teachers sign up to have their classes come and listen or watch what these people are doing. So we also have a lot of clubs and different unions that Stillwater have in panels so their peers can ask questions and learn about, more about what they do. And so examples of what we have going on during the week and that what Student Council's like on is we do our heritage fashion show, our culture fair, student versus teacher basketball, battle of the bands, and our snowball dance. It's the week of Donald Katsay.
All right, well, thank you very much for that. Any other questions? I'll move to the superintendent.
Two things tonight. First of all, I want to, and we had a couple of paraprofessionals just here, I want to acknowledge that this is Paraprofessional Week, it's a governor's proclamation. So, you know, oftentimes our paraprofessionals are the young, firm heroes of what happens within our school district. And so they are a vital, vital component of meet the needs of our students. So I just wanna publicly thank them for everything that they do. The second thing I'd like to talk about tonight is that yesterday I had a chance to meet with a media specialist. And I, I'm not sure if the board recalls, but for years and years, we did not have any clerks in most of the media centers. A few of them have within the school district. So I had a chance to meet with them yesterday, and a couple of things that came out of that conversation. First of all, they wanted to thank the district for supporting literacy and media in particular. And they said to me that for the first time since 1998, we have a media specialist at a secondary level in our middle school and our high school. But it's only one person. Now, when we talk about literacy being one of our points of emphasis at the school district, I think that would be very powerful to hear. But the other thing that they brought to our attention is we added some technicians or clerks to the media center for five hours a day. And so you can see on the screen up here in 2223, a couple of the buildings, if you have somebody for two hours a day, Lake Elmore has somebody for four and a half, Lily Lake for three, and then Rockefeller for one and a half. But we added that weekly. We shifted support there to have at least five hours a day. And what you can see in the middle column is the number of books that were checked out increased since we added personnel to the media centers who were there at least five hours a day. So I can see that after Lincoln increased by 3,500 books in the semester that kids were checking out. So it was not a hugely significant financial, you know, financial piece on the part of the district. You can see the impact on our students. And so I think that that is very powerful to see that happening. So that was a real positive for us, and I wanna touch base on that. The last thing that I wanna just bring to your attention is a lot of school districts, a lot of entities within the state are doing some sort of land recognition statement at the beginning of meetings. You know, I don't know if they do it monthly, annually, but I think that they're gonna be meeting, or I know that an AIPAC's meeting here in the next week or so. And I think that that's an opportunity for the district for something to take a look at. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that we are looking into that.
Thank you very much. Those are encouraging numbers to see that there's the books flying off the bookshelf, which is what they should be doing. So that is a little investment made a big difference, thank you for that. I just wanted, the only thing I wanted to say is I just wanna acknowledge, and the board responds, that this is an exciting time for the school board because this is a time where some of our classes have a project that they write someone in probably local government, state government. And so we are, we just wanted to acknowledge that we're getting a lot of great student letters sent to the school board with lots of great ideas, great feedback. And so we read them all. I think that we responded to nearly all of them, and we just really wanted to acknowledge that. And it's great work and great idea, so. And that was really all I'd like to kind of recognize at this time. So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. That is, that consent agenda is up on the screen. And I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Sherr's consent agenda. Can I get a second? Dr. Kelsenberg? Now you first. Okay, all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes. All right. Our next item is under Strategic Direction A, which is ensure the learning process is adaptable to meet individual student needs. We're gonna organize this in three different parts. We're gonna start with a academic calendar discussion. I want this to be a robust discussion, we all want this to be a robust discussion amongst the board. And I will do my best to get to everyone who has a comment, just raise your hand and I will call you. But before we get started on the board's discussion regarding the proposal, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hopper.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Sheriff Sherman, all members of the school board. Tonight, I am going to provide you a little bit of background and kind of tie things up. Maybe tie the lie I'm overlooking, maybe some proposed changes to the way we, uh, start the school year. So what I'm gonna do is, we'll talk to the pony plan pretty quickly here, fairly quickly. And then what, in most of the presentation tonight, I wanna talk about literacy. And I'm gonna give some history of our literacy results in the school district. And remember, they focus on social, emotional, learning, mental health. And I wanna talk about staff stress, and I wanna talk about student stress. And then some, some, a little bit more rationale on why the proposed change for 2526. And then we're gonna finish with how we would measure things if we did change. So, go ahead to the next slide. So, before we get started, you know, if we'll back up one, four seconds, I'm sorry. Here's the strategic directions. We want to ensure the learning process is adaptable to meet individual student needs. So we want a safe, welcoming, inclusive environment for all of our staff and students. We wanna have systems and resources that are aligned efficiently to support learning. And we wanna develop strong partnerships with the communities we serve. As I mentioned previously, our focus for this upcoming year is literacy, school culture, equity and inclusion, and social, emotional, learning and mental health. And I'm gonna be talking about two of those three tonight. So the first thing I wanna bring your attention to is our current reality regarding financial. All right, so when we're talking about aligning the resources, I want the board and the community to be aware of where we are funding initially. This is going back approximately 10 years, and you can see that this is our undesignated fund balance. You can see that we've been on a downward trend. You can see in 1920, it ticked up. Well, from what I understand, in 1920, we didn't have the contract settled, one of the major contracts in the district. And so it took two years to get it, so that's an artificial inflation of the fund balance there. So if I'm talking about our financial reality, and if we have financial supports to help us turn the ship around, we're in a tight situation right now. Go ahead. So now our current reality regarding literacy. Now this goes back to 2011, 12, I think that first number there is about 85%. We don't have it on the slide. So you can see back in the, of the early 10s there, we were mid 80s, and then we dropped, and then we dropped a little bit more. And at some point around 1516, I think the MCA team came in. And you can see we have been on a downward decline. So we went from, in about a dozen years, from mid to high 80s down to almost 50%, just over 50% proficient. Fifth grade, similar story, though it did tick up this past year. But we've dropped about 16% of points in a dozen year period. Seventh grade, we dropped 35 points in literacy. And 10th grade, you can see we dropped about 22 points. So this is trend data that basically whatever system, whatever things we are doing within the district is, you know, the students may change, the tests may change to some degree. Major trend data we have almost every year regarding literacy is in a downward slope. Social, emotional health. This first slide here is regarding students, and this is nationwide. 69% of students reported an increase in the, or schools reported an increase in the percentage of their students seeking mental health services at their school. 76% reported an increase in staff voicing concerns about their students exhibiting symptoms of depression, anxiety, and trauma. And 67% of public schools reported having increased the amount of types of mental health services they provide. So if we've more traumatized students, they will have to try and figure out how to provide services for them. This is interesting, this, so again, I'm trying to show you longitudinal data of about 10 years or so. So this survey was, the Minnesota survey was given in 2013. They asked the identical question in 2022, they didn't ask this question in the interim years. Do you have any long-term mental health, behavioral, or emotional problems? Long-term meaning six months or more. You can see in 2013, combined numbers for, for the males was 10%. In 2022, 17%. Now look at the females. In 2013, 14%. 38% of our, of our students, female students, said they have long-term mental health or behavioral or emotional problems that are long-term, meaning lasting more than six months. I think some, some board members have seen this, may have seen this slide in a couple of presentations we did, for the community presentations. But you can see that we have our students that are feeling uptick and feeling down, depressed, or hopeless. They're feeling more anxious, nervous, or on edge. And they're not able to, 52% of them are not able to stop or control worrying. Nearly 30% of our middle and high school students indicated they have long-term mental health, behavioral, emotional problems. Now to our teachers. This is from a Gallup poll in 2022. This is the most recent information from Gallup on this. They asked about industries, various industries that we have in the United States. The number one group of burnout in 2022 was K-12 educators, at 44%. Now, we're in the dialogue in the Minnesota here. So this is from a report on supply and demand in Minnesota teachers that the state government did in 2023. 30% of our teachers in the state of Minnesota who entered the teaching profession are, check out by their fifth year in the profession. And so this is trying to give you the trend line that they started in 1819, how many of our leaving was a professional over time. So retention is an issue for our employees, it's an issue for our, our teachers. As I'm researching the information, I thought Ed Minnesota had a great slide that they, or great information they had put together. They had a task force on smart solutions to Minnesota's teacher shortage. So I'll just kinda, kinda go through some of these. And they say Minnesota should provide resources that allow educators and administrators to build collaborative working environments. So we collaboratively decide, okay, how things are gonna happen in the school, what we're gonna do professionally. Grant more autonomy to teachers. Invest in professional development for all educators. Invest in strategies to help retain teachers of color. Decrease the professional demands and work stressors placed on special educators in particular. And give more attention to the mental health and well-being of all educators. Minnesota wants to specially support the well-being of educators working in high need schools. And I would say that people who are working in Minnesota post-COVID year in a high need school. So what does this all have to do with the calendar? All right, so having some experience with this type of calendar, I can share with you that if you start five days earlier, it reduces stress on staff and students because it puts national breaks in throughout the year, which benefits the mental health of everybody, and it provides them days to recover. It provides more days of instruction for MCA's, APA exams, and ACT prior to the test. More critical structures provided before the test, rather than if you give the test in, at the end of April, and you go to school through the first week in June, there's a lot of missed opportunities for our staff to, to align what they're teaching with the standards of what's being assessed. And it aligns with the original student, as soon as they're ready to come back to the school the third week in August and be done at school and away. So how will we measure it? Okay, if we do make this change, how do you measure it, Superintendent? You develop a baseline first of all. So we would assess where people are at regarding how they're feeling in school, impact of homework. Just make, develop a baseline of 2425. You can also take a look at, and we're actually working with family leads right now to identify the number of students we are seeing full received mental health support from year to year as they are a primary provider for us. We should be, we should be doing this regardless, but we, we should be surveying our district staff related job satisfaction and stress. So we need, we need this information so we can make good decisions about beating the needs of our, of our, of our staff. Academic results from year to year speak for themselves. And then, as I alluded to a couple times within, within the discussion this moment, or the presentation this evening, the Minnesota Student Survey. So then my question for the board as we roll into the discussion is, I've just thrown a lot of data at you over the last 10 or 12 years. Is what you're doing as a system acceptable to Stillwater area public schools? You get that?
Great. So we have a lot of information that we can start with. And we can ask questions of the superintendent, talk amongst each other, but I think just so we're not talking over one another, just to raise your hand, and I'll just try to kind of spread the conversation around as best I can. Dr. Petrie?
So I have a few questions. First, can you talk a little bit more explicitly about the difference in days of instruction for the first semester versus the second semester in the proposed schedule? Because I think there's like an eight-day difference in instruction between semesters. You know, why isn't that a concern?
Well, if you're looking at straight A for days, you would say it's a concern. But if you look at the reality of what you do in each semester of this career, it evens itself out. So, first semester is shorter in this calendar. However, our testing does not happen during the first semester, it happens during second semester. So during the MCA testing for the elementarys, for really K through, through 10 or 11 here, we have testing that occurs at some time, typically in the month of April, for a number of days for our students that they're not getting their day-to-day classes, they're being assessed. So if you're challenging these days of instruction, the days of the assessments are not days of instruction. So that's one piece of it. The second piece is having been a superintendent in Minnesota for quite a long time. We have a lot of snow days in January, February, and March that we don't have. We have some occasionally in, maybe in November or December. But, you know, historically, the late winter, we have a lot more snow, a lot more days of instruction. In this case, we become even days or, or winters is, I would say impactful. The third piece of it is, and I alluded to it in the comments earlier. If you were to ask any teacher who teaches in a school and, and they're teaching in the first week in June, they're not getting a lot of focused kids in that classroom. They are struggling to keep kids on task. And so, yeah, those are five days of instruction maybe, uh, but they're not high-focused days of the instruction. So the question of, uh, why aren't you pushing the calendar back even more is, one of the things that we're trying to weigh here is impact on the community. And so if we wanted to perfectly balance this calendar, yep, we could probably start school one or five days earlier. But you, then you're getting to more of a, an impactful nature of the community. So I hope that answers your question.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have one because I think if, um, okay, I'll just have one quick one because it sticks out at me as, um, and I actually did reach out to your former district. Um, and I know you were fine with that, and I talked to a board member, and you encouraged it in fact. And I talked to a former board member at Elrati, I think I shared those notes with everyone. But I just wanted to share that, um, they, at the time, were making the change that was going from a post-Labor Day start to a pre-Labor Day start. So it was a much more significant change than when we're talking about, because we already, as a district, we have started pre-Labor Day for quite a long time now. So moving it five days versus moving it, um, garnered a lot more attention than maybe it has in our district in this moment. The feedback was extremely positive. There was an acknowledgement that there was a huge amount of community interest. In fact, at their meeting, when they passed this, um, there were like a hundred people in attendance, community members and staff, at, at the time they were considering this change. Now, the anecdotal feedback, this was a person who stepped into the role, made this vote, is still on the board now. He said the comments that he gets now, if anyone comments at all, is, why didn't we do this sooner? And that was from all stakeholders. That it's, probably has a support in his estimation of about ninety percent. That there are still yes people who want a post-Labor Day, um, but that by and large is widely accepted and staff and students alike appreciate, um, the system changes that were brought on by such a proposal. So I guess I just wanted to, I know there was more in my note that hopefully you all had a chance to read. But I do want the community to know that as we try to do our due diligence on how this proposal is likely to work out or how it impacts other districts, we did do that. What my one question though was, there's obviously a lot of resistance from staff. I mean, I'll be honest, the people that I hear the most from are, are teachers who are resistant to this. Can you explain or talk a little bit to, if you were talking to a teacher and they don't believe that this is going to make their life easier? I mean, you have obviously talked, you went to every school, you've talked to every, in every building, um, what would you say to them? I mean, how do you, like, what are those benefits that they're going to receive?
I can't guarantee anything, but I can show you this. That the system that I lead right now, that I have led for the past year and a half, is probably more stressed out than any system I've ever led. And I think there's different pieces to this answer. I think, starting a week earlier, provides us a framework. All right, and it provides us, okay, opportunities to decompress throughout, throughout the year. But it's not just the framework. It's what we do with the framework and what, what we do with those opportunities. I know that there's frustration from the background, from staff, uh, about professional development. And, um, one of the things that we are working on with the teachers, and I have a number of meetings with them, the teacher leaders over time this past year is, how do we get a teacher voice? And you saw the stuff I shared with you from Education Minnesota in, in the collaborative process of working together as, as a district. So, um, I think we're going to, I think we're putting some steps in place right now to do that. It's, it, it's disheartening to think that people don't feel valued in professional development or education. And that's on me as a superintendent, okay, what can we do better to meet the needs of our staff? So, you know, it is, it is change and it is different. However, I sit here and I show you this data and I, I don't have the multimillion dollars in the hole to say, okay, well, we want to hire our own new mental health experts to do this for our, for our staff and our, and our students. Okay, well, I am familiar with something that did produce the amount of stress on people, and that's why I'm making this recommendation. You know, it is not, um, an easy recommendation to make. So it, it does impact community, it does impact people's lives. But at the same time, I would be dishonest to myself if I didn't say, okay, we've got to try something different with folks because people are stressed. And, and I mean, part of it is we need to synchronize better our PD and the things that we're doing. But we need, our educators need time. Right now, we're on a treadmill, we're just going forward and forward. So.
Great, thank you very much for that. Did you, I have my just.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you kind of were touching on several things that I was already going to bring up. First of all, thank you for the presentation, um, kind of giving us the bigger context of where, how we got here and the issues that we're dealing with, both financially and with literacy and social emotional, I mean, the whole package. It was a good reminder of what I think a lot of people are asking for through our feedback is data. Where is the data for, um, where we are and where we need to go? Now, what is, I think, still missing is proof that this solution is going to fully work. But what I do see is a plan for measuring, if this does go through, measuring, um, our progress. And kind of, and I appreciate actually now, even though I wasn't fully on board to begin with, the, the two-camera option. Um, and I can see now that there's an opportunity next year for really setting the stage for that baseline in understanding and evaluating how this, um, new change, um, new system change for our district could be impacting the whole system. And I think that that, um, is actually a wise move to do things. Thank you for that. Um, I guess I do have, well, actually, no, I'm getting back in a second. Um, the executive summary that we have was also really helpful in getting feedback from, um, the community, um, surveys and the, what are they called? The. Community conversations, thank you. There's a term for it. And then also from, um, the S E A, uh, their summary as well was really helpful to kind of go through and hear, um, where everybody is coming from. And I went through the whole thing all over again with my little system of what are the systemic changes versus individual changes um, that we are looking at. And one thing that really stood out to me was, um, professional development and that that is really a concern from our staff. Um, and that to me screams that we're, the way we're doing professional development just isn't working right now. Um, and I do see this calendar as an opportunity to always revamp that, um, that structure. And our kids need it. I, I mean, our sliding data is, the trends are not okay. And to answer your question, no, stats really is not where we need to be right now. And I feel very strongly about that. So I feel like this is an opportunity for us to do a systemic shift that fits with our budget constraints because we're a little low. And that we can measure and see how we can really benefit hopefully from this smart change. Now, you did have a question? No, that's a long, a long summary. Um, in the executive summary, there's a couple of places where it mentions that we don't align with other districts. Um, I think there's two different spots where it came up as a concern. How much is that an issue if we have a calendar that does not align with our neighboring districts?
Do we align, no?
I don't know, do we?
No.
Okay. I guess we do start a week earlier. Has that been an issue? Is that an issue? Do you run?
I, I think if you live, yeah, I mean, I think the real world, um, the answer is, yep, if I live in a different community, my kids live in that, go to school in that community, that's impactful. That was impactful, um, in Albert Lee, what we had, you know, family was in Albert Lee, but they worked in Austin. And, and so, yeah, that is a, that's a real world personal concern for people that, um, that is impactful. But I can also share this with you. All right, when this article came out in the Pioneer Press where they talked about, we're looking at maybe different options for a calendar. I have areas superintendents calling and saying, hey, wow, that's a really cool idea. So, you know, we'll see. But, so that's, well, we are already at that.
Okay.
I will say, um, before I move to, I think Andrew was next, and that, um, yeah, there was one caution from the former, um, Albert Lee, uh, board member. And it was just be wary when you measure that first year of implementation because there is that, in our case, it will be that week that will be shorter. And so the initial feedback during that first year, if you're expecting an immediate result, we could see an actual trend down. So just to caution you as we did talk about measurement, and I know you, we all want to see those measurables in what we're doing and return on investment and how the ideas are impacting our, our learners, so. Thank you for being so patient.
Absolutely, thank you. And thank you for bringing up kind of the, an information that you had gotten from, um, the board member down in Albert Lee. That, you know, it was very good input from his perspective. And as you mentioned, you know, the challenge is anecdotal. I mean, that's, you know, there's no, as Director Hocker mentioned, there's no data behind that. I guess, you know, the question I have is, is we look at, you know, the state in Minnesota, which is its own state, and obviously in this southern part of, of the country, uh, there's, you know, that's a norm to start in August or July. Minnesota, Wisconsin, New England, it seems like that's the definite regions that have kind of the more, what I'll call traditional calendars. So, um, you know, there has been different school districts that have tried it. I know there was a consortium that had done the early start. And again, you know, just trying to find information and data around, you know, what has been that feedback. And unfortunately, it seems like there hasn't been any type of measurable outcomes that have been communicated from a research standpoint that demonstrates, um, you know, those student outcome impacts. And so I'm just really interested in trying to better, you know, quantify those types of things. And even just to get a better understanding of, you know, we have an example of Elrati that, you know, they have a POS experience, but there has to be other schools that have made the switch that have switched back. And that's for me, the disconnect of what didn't work out well, why, you know, and what was the challenge? And, and so those are things that I still have an information gap, you know, that is, um, challenging for me as I look at making some type of, um, systemic change, as, as you mentioned as well. So, um, I really appreciate the information on, um, you know, the mental health of students, you know. I, I think I bring a unique lens to the board of having, uh, L H H students, you know, and have the youngest family on, on the board. And so I definitely look at things in some, maybe in some different ways. And I think, you know, COVID is, is, you know, painful as it's the community to talk about it, it was a big deal. It had a huge impact on the students, especially younger students, um, and students of all ages for that matter. And so, you know, I know my youngest is kindergarten, which is a really big learning opportunity, was online. And, you know, that happened during COVID. So, um, so, you know, I, I, you know, looking at those types of things and saying, what is that new normal baseline that, you know, that unfortunately students' needs are only continuing to, you know, increase because of the trauma that they dealt with, uh, from COVID? And just the challenges that they created. So I'm, I'm interested in kind of finding out, are there other ways that we can create some natural breaks, uh, using a more traditional calendar? Obviously, there's a lot of districts, majority that have a more traditional post-Labor Day. And ones that I kind of use as, in my own opinion, kind of a mental benchmark of high-performing districts that I kind of keep as, um, as a point of reference. And so just figure out what do they do well and how, ways that we can advocate it, um, that might be effective.
If we were a high-performing district, it wouldn't be out of this recommendation tonight.
I, I had a lot while Dr. Andrew was talking.
Go.
If that's okay. When you mentioned if there are any other districts that have tried it and gone back, um, at the MSBA conference, I actually was talking to someone who was from Forest Lake, and they apparently did do one year of, um, they had a big construction project. And he was talking about how they had gone to an earlier calendar that ended on the natural breaks. And they only did it for one year and then immediately switched back. And they said they, the immediate feedback coming out of that year was very positive. And that, but they had already planned for the next year, so they just kind of continued on with their old, um, their old calendar. And at least from this board member's perspective, he wishes that they had considered staying on the old, or the new one-year calendar that they, that they tried. Um, so I do know that there are other districts who at least have tried and gone back. I'm sure if you ask the people in Forest Lake, they might have other, other opinions as well, but that was my comment. Dr. Ready?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Fong, thank you very much for the presentation. I have a quick statement here and a quick question as well. Uh, one thing that we've done quite well in this district is we've put lots of great activities in the district that actually supports our students' education and has put us in so many, uh, great ways in terms of output. But as you can see, um, literacy has been one of our biggest struggles. I mean, we've been talking about this the last four, almost four years we've been on the board now. And the trend, obviously, the trend shown, uh, within the last almost ten weeks, uh, it's been going down. And it's probably even worse within the last few years. Something is, is, is not right, and then something needs to be done. With the change, I know it's just five days. With the change, what were you thinking in terms of measurables? What are the expectations that you're looking at? What are you thinking in terms of measurables? What is that year we're going to be looking at in terms of measurables? And what do you think will be the expected outcome? What do you hope to achieve with this change?
You know, people have asked the question, is, you're looking at potentially two structural changes? You're looking at start times, you're looking at the, potentially the calendar. And they said if you do one over the other, what would your recommendation be? And my recommendation is, is the calendar. And from, from my experience and from my background and knowledge of it, it, and it's five days, but it reduces stress in the system. Okay, and so when I, when I see these numbers, teachers want to go leave the profession, and I see our, our numbers peaking, um, on the mental health side of things, um, okay. We don't have, as I stated, we don't have multimillion dollars to, to invest in, in, in support. But we can, if, if we're creating the calendar, we can create some time. Okay, and so, you know, to Andrew's point, am I going to sit here and say, okay, our, our scores are going to skyrocket? The scores are going to skyrocket because of the change in the calendar. But the scores are going to skyrocket because we, we put quality PD together, we collaborate, and we work with our staff to best meet their needs and our student needs. So as far as, as far as measurables, um, if you go back to the presentation, you know, again, I, I think it's, there's probably more, um, more mental health-type measurables than I can, the academics will follow. Uh, but what I'm most interested in is go back to the, oh, the slide sixteen. You know, okay. Student stress level in school, okay, what, what's, what's their experience, you know, all right? An easy one, I mean, I'll give you an anecdotal one from home, all right? We're at home, it's the holiday break, and my senior daughter is stressing because she's got these homework assignments that she's going to do when she gets back. So an easy question would be, okay, tell us about your experience over that holiday break. Or the winter break. Okay, you're going to get some real good feedback. Same thing for staff, okay? Were you, is he creating paper or what were you doing? What, how did it feel when you finished the semester? Was there a lot of stress to get the semester done before the winter break? And so it's those kind of things that are, okay, what are, what are we doing as a system to, to reduce or impact the stress on people's lives? I think too often in, in the world, we inherit, and I, people have heard me say this before, nobody in their right mind would design a system that says, you're starting after this date in September. All right, you're going to go to the date, the winter break, when we tell you the winter break is. And then you're going to come back three weeks, or you're going to come back and three weeks later, we're going to give you exams and final projects and. How is that good for kids in any way, shape, or form? How's it good for staff? I mean, but, but you know what? We do it because that's the way we do it. And so what you, you get from me is, all right, and I, and I like to think, I always think of common sense. Is this, is this sensical? I mean, does this make sense? And so. And so, um, but, but that's kind of the, what we would be looking at as far as. And then the academic results and, and the student survey, those are more longitudinal pieces that we would, we would look at over time.
Yes, Dr. Prouvan?
Oh, okay. Um, so, I guess going back to the idea of, of results. So you, you had experience with this in Albert Lee. Were there academic results that were noticeable? There were. I, I would say there were initially, and then, um, we plateaued and then pulled it. And so I think we had the same, you know, I think results as that. Everybody post-COVID was, you know, either flat or down. Um, but, yeah, when we went to it initially, I think for a few years after academically, we went to it, we did some positive. And I would say it wasn't necessarily calendar-driven. It was more leader-driven. We had the right leaders leading PD, et cetera, within the district and, and got in the right spots. Um, so, but again, I, I think, what I would say is the calendar itself is not going to drive this. It's, it's, it's the vehicle that we're going to use to, um, to improve the system. But honestly, I'm moving to school five days earlier, that's not, that will not, that will not move the guile as far as academically. It may help ultimately to help size things, but, um, academic thing by itself, it has, has to be interrelated.
Did you have your hand over?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, I believe there's a correlation though. I believe there's a correlation between creating a space where there's an ease in terms of how students respond and their mental health. Uh, there's a huge correlation there. The impact is what definitely in terms of outcome, you'll probably find out after a few years that, um, uh, if this goes through after a few years, uh, looking at the, the measurables. Um, regardless of what it is, something needs to be done. And I think all sector of our community within the last couple of years, um, for different reasons, have always talked about, uh, our literacy, the fact that we're not, we're continuously declining in terms of our literacy gap. I personally have also been, um, really bothered by that, not only with respect to the literacy, but also with respect to the achievement gap. You will see the trend, uh, from elementary school, you will see the trajectory of the trend to middle school and also to high school. It's obvious, they, they, that actually shows it, right? So we need to do something about this. 10 years of progressive decline shows that something needs to change. Every year, um, the community comes and some of the biggest complaints are, are literacy issues. Uh, like I said, it's, we have some great programs, great opportunities for our kids, but I think we're still lacking when it comes to ability for kids to be able to read, uh, which ultimately impacts their responses even to the academic pressure. And ultimately leads to some of the mental health breakdown that we see. So there's a huge correlation there. My hope is, like you're right, they said, five days may sound like it's nothing. But it is something, if it's going to ease those opportunities, that creates those problems for both our teachers and our students. Um, I have kids in the system, three kids at home, going through this, through all the system. You could tell all of this pressures, like you rightly said, for some of us that have kids as well. Uh, it does impact our kids. I know we, as parents, we go, oh, just do your very best, do what you can. Uh, but you can see the trend. Do your very best would not help it, especially if we continue to, uh, if our performance continues to decline. And I'm hoping that, um, we will see those, um, opportunities for our children, for our students, and give us the opportunity to really look at the possibility of, of making those changes where necessary to improve the mental health of both our kids and of course, our teachers.
Dr. Petrie?
Um, I, um, you know, there's been a lot of people who've been, you know, giving us information. I've talked to a few, um, people, including teachers. Um, I've been thinking a lot about the pros and the cons of this. This is, you know, it's kind of a big decision. And, you know, just because I come from a writing background, I kind of had to sit down and organize my thoughts that way. And so I'm just going to kind of read, um, uh, how I organize my thoughts. And there's like four main points that I guess I want to make. So in the first place, I just want to give a little bit more context to this whole idea about when we traditionally start school, um, in Minnesota. Um, I did go and find some, um, research from the Pew Research Center. And the majority of students in the United States go back to school in August, with the third week in August being the most common. And that barely beats out the first week in August and the fourth week in August. Now, it's true that August start dates are more common in the South, where it can get really hot in August. But even in the West, North, Central region, um, according to the Pew Research Center, which is the seven-state region that Minnesota is in, um, about two-thirds of schools start up in the third or fourth week of August. Um, in Minnesota, there is a lot in the books requiring a post-Labor Day start, unless a district has a large construction project. In that case, they're allowed to start earlier. Just as a little historical note, um, this legislative decision was not made because of the best interests of students. There really wasn't any discussion about that at the time. Um, as far as I can tell, by talking to somebody who was a lobbyist for a school organization back when this happened, um, the best interests of students weren't even considered since this bill went through the Agriculture Committee and was pushed through by Minnesota Resort Owners. So we're sort of in a situation where we're following what's best for resort owners, but not necessarily what's best for kids. Um, my second point is that this decision is not driven by data on either side. We don't know exactly what sort of impact there might be on student mental health or achievement. We also don't know whether it would harm students' abilities to get summer jobs. We don't know if June is actually going to be lousier than August in this time of climate change. And we don't know if students are going to be too distracted to pay attention in August when their friends in other districts are still on summer break. Some of this, not all of it, but some of it, is essentially spaghetti against the wall speculation, because change is hard, and it's really hard to see our way through to the end. Um, back in the day, um, there were just, people are just always reluctant about things that they don't necessarily, they're just not sure about. Um, what we do know is that our new superintendent instituted this change in this old district of Albert Lee, that there was stiff opposition, and that the current board chair reports that it's no longer controversy. I believe it's worth trying this change. Although I do want to see as much feedback as possible and assessment of this change during what I consider to be the pilot project phase of implementation. And that leads me to my third point. This doesn't need to be a permanent change. Um, we're not talking about tearing down a building or remodeling a building. Those kinds of infrastructure changes tend to be permanent. But a calendar change is a relatively easy change to make. It's five extra days of school in August. It requires schedule changes for students, families, and staff, but it involves no financial cost to the district. If after three years, which I think is a reasonable time to try this out, um, we find out through the assessments that administration has put into place, um, that there are no identified benefits and that everybody hates it, then we can switch back to a post-Labor Day start. But this is a change that our new superintendent believes will help, at least in a small way, to improve the educational and mental health environment for students. And I believe it's worth a try. And my final point is, I'm inclined to support our superintendent. I realize that this reason might be controversial. Some people might see it as rubber stamping. I don't see it that way at all. If Dr. Funk came with the proposal to tear down the high school, build two new ones, and change the name Ponies to Stallions, we would have to have a private conversation about that because some things are just beyond the pale. But here's the thing, we have had tremendous instability in this district at top levels for some time. We've had seven superintendents in 20 years, and because of that, we've had organizational drift in this district. We hired Dr. Funk because he was experienced, and he employs systems thinking in his approach to organizational design. I am not 100% sure that this change will bring about significant benefits, but it is a relatively low-key change. Let's not forget that we are just talking about five school days, and we are giving the community a year and a half to adjust their summer schedules. And I think Dr. Funk deserves a chance to prove to the staff and community that he knows what he's doing. So I'm going to be a yes vote on this.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Dr. Kelsner?
Um, question actually. So we've, in the last couple of years, we've made lots of changes in our district. I think we're at the beginning of stability. We've got our administration change, even our board now. So there's been improvements in staff, administration. We're taking the hard looks at curriculum. And then if we did this, we're going to measure it. How do we separate the measurement of this versus all the other things that we've been doing for effectiveness?
Well, again, I, I think it's, we are measuring perception, uh, which is a little bit different. The other piece of it is, you do have, you do have hard data in there. And, you know, one element is going up significantly over the past few years is the number of students who get mental health supports from family means within the district. Okay, so we have family means professionally in the building now. We have waiting lists in some buildings. Um, so, okay, that's a hard data. All right, we wound the needle on, on, uh, on the mental health side of things. Uh, you know, I talked about the survey of our students and our staff that throughout the year, okay? You know, give us honest feedback of what you think. Currently, the system we have, which we will survey next year, and then we'll follow it up with, okay, the calendar has not changed. Um, and the other piece of it, we're not just looking for, for calendar effectiveness, but, uh, I think a loud and clear message came from the staff survey was the professional development. All right, what are we doing there to improve it and collaborate with the community? That's part of the, it's, again, my point on this is, the calendar in itself is not the, not going to, it's not going to be the change. It's what we do with it that's going to be the change. And so, and then of course, the Minnesota student survey and what we see with academic results from year to year.
I just want to say, um, I want to acknowledge Sam, our second, uh, board representative, speaks very passionately about this in past meetings. He's highly supportive of it. Um, I know that he cannot be here tonight. Um, but I want to open the door to our other student rep, Jenna, to see if you have anything that you would like to say or comment on. I mean, if you want to pass, pass, so it's not putting you on the spot.
I would love to.
Okay.
Um, Sam is super passionate about this. I can't believe he's listening to this right now. He's really sick tonight, but he, we talked about this a few weeks ago too. The idea of, we want to relieve the stress on students. I mean, a student that is a senior too, and the typical day when you turn your college apps by is January 1st. I spent most of my break not only doing my homework for classes and doing readings and having to prepare for tests when I came back. I did an AP class test the Thursday I came back from break. I had a reading quiz like the Wednesday I came back from break. Like, it is one of those things, and I think a lot of students, their brains kind of shut off when they go on break. They're excited, you know, they want that relaxing period of time when they don't have to worry about school. And I think being in a system where, you know, we're at school for so long and we have those consecutive five-day weeks leading up to that break, and then we finally get that break, a lot of people, like, a lot of brains shut off, and then we go back and we're back in full force of school. After having such a long break, I think that's not only stressful for a lot of kids, but it's like a lot. And even as a person, I'm in like a language class, I'm Spanish five. Having that break and then going back and having to take a Spanish exam, I'm like, I have to stay here, I don't know what I'm talking about. So, I don't know, I think there is a lot of added stress for anyone in that situation too. I know teachers that were like, we're going to have our test, you know, the, my physics class, for example, we were going to have our test the day we came back from break. And he was like, this actually doesn't make any sense. I don't think any of you will study. We're going to have it the Wednesday before we leave, or whatever it might have been. So, yeah, I know Sam would have so much to say about this. But, yeah, I just think it would definitely will leave a lot of stress off of people if they didn't, they could go on their break and not have to worry about anything. And they'd only have to worry about their college apps or, you know, not worry about anything, like, yeah, so.
Thank you very much for weighing in on the issue. Are there other comments or questions? Yes?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jenna, for that. Um, she said something that was really, really important. Um, uh, this is probably the first time that we're really paying concrete attention to students' mental health. I say this because I have, when my kids were in school, that was one of the big things they always talked about. Unfortunately for my oldest daughter, she went to a school where this same problem exists. Last year, North Carolina State University lost 14 students to suicide. 14 students to suicide. And part of it too had to do with, before she got home this year, they had a test, an exam, actually, not a test, an exam, the day before they all had to leave school. All true, while she was on break, she was doing assignments. Then went back to school, immediately back in class. It's similar to what's happening right here, and I appreciate what you've said. We have to pay attention to our kids' mental health. Uh, sometimes we don't know where that's coming from, because sometimes kids don't talk. And you can see it in struggling. Uh, not because they're not good at what they do, but because of the pressures they have to go through in order to meet those expectations. So I'm really happy that we're focusing on kids' mental health. Regardless of what, what the outcome is academically, we want to make sure our kids are safe. We want to make sure our kids are responding appropriately. We want to make sure this is not something we carry on to college as well, because then it might be too late for some of us. And so I'm really happy, and thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that.
Okay. Or do you want to, well, go ahead. You know what, I have an, um, okay, I'll talk, I'll talk. Just pick me. Uh, okay, uh, no, it's okay. After, um, uh, Dr. Prouvan made that comment, I, and Jenna as well, I'm really thinking about, um, our students and kind of that, well, college schedule, quite frankly, um, that that is kind of the norm to get exams done before winter break, and then also mid-May, oftentimes earlier mid-May. Um, but that is already the secondary schedule that students are transitioning from high school into. Um, I feel like that is a valuable thing to consider as well. Uh, but then going along with also something you mentioned was how stressful it was to have an exam right before break. Um, and honestly, it is. And that is a stress that college students have to experience and manage as soon as they start. So that's something that I noticed in that SEA survey was concern about teachers, um, building up, and students as well, their mental health building into those exams right before break during a busy time of year. Um, and then also teachers carrying that stress through break and having to do grading and preparing for a new semester um, as we come back from that break as well. And, um, I, I took that to heart. Um, and I definitely understand that that's going to be an adjustment um, for both our staff and our students to kind of figure out how to make that work. Um, I did look on the calendar. It prompted me to actually look at the calendar and see kind of what our break looks like for that delayed year, and we do have, or that second year. And we do have a little longer break, and we, and added in those grading days and, um, the end of semester. So I think there's like a little pushing right at the very end, which made me happy to see. Um, so that teachers hopefully will have an opportunity to rest during break and then use those two days to kind of come back and ease back into a second semester and start fresh with a new class or a new classroom of kids. Um, so I think that there is potential. I see that it'll be a, a culture shift, um, but I do see potential in, um, making things a little better in the long run once we make that transition over those couple of years. And actually, Dr. Petrie, go back to yours. Um, your idea of having kind of a three-year evaluation of really looking past that first year where we're really working off the bugs um, and figuring out how to make adjustments for the second year, and then reevaluating and seeing how we're doing. And then in that third year, maybe figuring out if this is something we want to stick with long-term. Um, I think that would be a good evaluation process um, to kind of give us a little room to have a pilot of this. Thank you for that comment as well. Dr. Prouvan?
Thank you. Um, yeah, no, all excellent points. And, you know, obviously that, that's, um, what's happening with those students there. And, um, Dr. Petrie, you know, don't expect anything less with your background. It's very eloquent, you know, words that you shared and, um, you know, resonates, you know, very well. Um, and so- And so, and I just want, you know, as I back up, I want to make sure just to acknowledge my own personal kind of appreciation, you have these discussions? I think this is exactly what I think we need to be doing as a board, is obviously having, you know, our superintendent bring forth creative and innovative ideas should be given consideration. And I think if he wasn't, that would be obviously a different conversation. And so that's exactly something that I think what we want, and I'm definitely very grateful for you to be willing to have these tough conversations and report ideas that are not always maybe all as well received in the community. So, so thank you, I appreciate that. So, you know, along those lines, I think as I look at it, and I kind of use the line, I never want to be the nickel in the drawer, and I feel like I am right now. But essentially, as I look at these things, and again, it's really just based on, you know, how I've approached it, and I really have taken a very pragmatic approach of looking at a lot of different angles. And I've weighted the pros and cons, as Dr. Petrie had mentioned, and looked at some different things, and I'm looking at them in the different lines. And so, you know, I just wanted to kind of share that perspective from that end, you know, especially coming in, having a, you know, a personal insight of young families that have young children, and some of those challenges that exist post-COVID. And I think, you know, you know, I think that's what I hear so much from, you know, other family members, obviously being at elementary school, so often with our two boys, is, is that, you know, that insight and some of the challenges that they hear, and their inability to sometimes pivot for many different reasons, socioeconomic, you know, whatever it might be. And so, you know, as I look at that, you know, I want to be mindful of just looking at some of the things from a younger perspective, which obviously, you know, there's a lot of value added from high school that I will absolutely not discount. I think there's absolute merit and there's very valid points, and this obviously is a multifaceted debate, which is great to have. And so, you know, as I look at it, you know, in different situations, sometimes it can be helpful for families to have that break, to regroup, you know, as a family and to help shift, you know, or finish that, you know, that core strong before that ends in mid-January. And, you know, that's something that I hear very often, because obviously, you know, high performers, a lot of them high performers. And there's other types of student needs, as was highlighted, that I think you want to be mindful of as we consider those types of changes that create some more complexities from that end. Also, you know, as I look at through different lines, just a professional perspective. You know, I have the privilege of sitting at the table with clients and sharing the most intimate details, financial, personal, you know, quasi-therapist, in some forms of fashion. And, you know, just hearing the perspectives of things, and what I hear is obviously, and it's anecdotal, but, you know, the importance of summer for a family system. I think that's so critical, and I don't think, I don't want to discount that, because obviously the time that we have around the kids is very little, and obviously we're here for student achievement outcomes, but we're also here to help support the systems that support our fam, that support the students, including families and teachers. And so, you know, that, you know, three-bedroom window is really sacred space, I think, for a lot of families. And it's a time for connections, for families, connections for, within the communities, connection, you know, with friends. And it's something that I think is really important, just from an overall mental health and personal being, of having those relationships, I think is very critical, and something I want to be mindful of as well. And as well as just the, you know, the exponential learning outcomes that happen outside the classroom. I mean, I think our boys, they did great in school, they're awesome teachers, and we love our elementary school, but learning happens outside the classroom, and that's such an important aspect, especially at a younger age as they grow. So, you know, for me, you know, as I look at this, you know, change is hard, I'm wholeheartedly supportive of Dr. Funk and everything you're doing. I just love to see if there's other types of tools that we can use to create the outcomes that we're looking for, that maybe are less disruptive to those family systems and the needs of those families of trying to create those memories and opportunities for the children outside of school as well. And I think that then in turn also leads, I think, to better outcomes as those students feel better supported by having those systems, you know, stronger in place. So, it's a short-sighted baby, you know, it's something that I'll be voting no, and again, it's not for the merit, it's just based on my own lenses that I'm seeing it. And I am so grateful for these conversations, and I'm grateful for this board to have these, you know, opportunities to share this really good insight from everything. And so, I, you know, I personally would be supportive of, you know, making a motion to adopt a post-Labor Day schedule. Again, you know, that's my own vulnerable feedback.
And I should, and thank you for that, thank you very much. I should say too that, because the board at the last meeting, for those that don't watch every single board meeting, the board at the last meeting did direct the superintendent to create two options. One, that was a pre-Labor Day start, and then another counter option that was the post-Labor Day start, which everyone has reviewed in their board packet. So, and the community can see those two options later as well. Did I, did I hear a motion, or do we have more? I mean, we can still discuss after a motion is made, but I, you know.
The next one on the agenda is 2024.
For the 2024, okay. Are you okay if we just continue? Okay, we'll continue the discussion. Can I ask, because Andrew is bringing a specific lens to his having a younger family, can, Super T, can you speak to the five days earlier? I know our kids, can they go on vacation? Can they call, I mean, can you speak to that?
100%, so, you know, one of the concerns, I would say, for Minnesota is the state fair. And, you know, a lot of kids are FFA, probably as many kids as an FFA in poor age there than are here, much more in the community though. And so, we have, you know, made clear to families, so we make it clear to families here, if you're going to take your kids to go someplace, take them and go, whether that's August, whether that's February, whatever it may be. And can they go on the state in something? Absolutely, we support that 100%. And if they're showing something at the state fair, great. So that's, yeah. You know, and regarding the three months, with the exception of the one week, and it's going to be one week shorter, for the first year we do it, it will be three months on us. It's just a shift one week to the, so. But if their families have vacations, well, okay, we'll do it.
I just wanted to speak to those, because certainly it's a perspective that we should be considering. Yes, Dr. Laver.
So, maybe I'll be the penny to your nickel in the drawer. I guess I'm pragmatic enough to think we're not losing time, right? It's a shift, it's only five days. That said, you know, I also question whether or not, I wish there was more data behind it. You know, I wish, I wish there was a more obvious consequence to making the change, like the start time discussion. That makes perfect sense to me. This makes less sense to me. Not that it won't work, not that it wouldn't, if it were to pass, I would hope it would work, and I'd hope it would all be measured accurately, and everything would work out great, and what, nothing but the best. But, it just doesn't have, I think in the end, when I look at it, the salesperson in me says I'm not sold.
So let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, are you satisfied with the results you see?
No, absolutely not. But I don't see how this gets it there. It may very well, I could be completely, I could be completely wrong, I'm just not sold on it. And so it isn't, it isn't that I don't see the intent behind it, I think it's all very well-intentioned. It's just not there yet. And balancing it against the impact to the community that we are, I mean, again, I have yet to hear from anybody, and I'm not naive enough to think that I'm going to have people coming out of the wordroom to say, oh, this is so wonderful. You know, people are usually quiet then. But I haven't heard anybody say, that's awesome. Let's lose a warm week in summer. I just haven't heard it.
Have you seen anybody say that your test results are awesome?
No, absolutely not. But again, I don't know that this is the way that you get there. I'm not saying I do know the way. I just don't know.
Do I have some experience in maybe leading something like this?
You do, and again, this is not you.
Oh, it is, because I'm the one bringing the presentation.
Right, but I, this, again, this is not about intention or anything, or, but then, you know, when I ask the question, what are the academic results of it? If there aren't any that we can, that we can point to, then, again, that's one less data point that I can say, yeah, that's the way to go. So, I guess, you know, I'm not necessarily in favor of making a change to a week earlier, but if it passes, you know, I'll support it, right? You know, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it, but I will support it wholeheartedly, because I want the test for registered.
Did you want to say something? Did you want to say something? Otherwise I'll keep it.
Go ahead.
Okay. I very much respect both your opinions on both the values of summer and also kind of the data piece. And I guess I, as I'm listening to both of you guys kind of process and explain your positions, I keep thinking back to, if there were data, if somebody had done research on this and really shown the outcomes, would that data necessarily translate to us here in Stillwater? You can't necessarily extrapolate that just because one district is successful with any change, that it will work in a different context. And I know that as an educator. And one of the ways that we, I remember during my master's program, that we would test ideas through action research projects, where we would have an idea that had a little bit of research out there, and then we'd see, is this research actually valid in our classrooms? And it was the same kind of process that we're going through, where we try something new and see how we can measure the outcome as we go. And then after a certain amount of time, we evaluate, was this a good idea or not? And then you make adjustments, because you know what, you're going to get new kids next year, and who knows if it's going to work again. So, in the education system, it is a really tough thing to really gather, like, real firm data, because kids are changing every single day, every single year. You will never have the same kid in your classroom twice. So, nailing down that data and saying, this works here, it's going to work there, is really tricky. So, I think as educators, we have to be brave and be willing to recognize when things are not working for our kids, and try something new, try something different. And I think maybe that's where I'm feeling a little more brave in this space, in wanting to see that we need improvements and try something new. This is something we can actually do. It is a smaller change, and we can afford it. A lot of the ideas that are thrown out with busing changes and all kinds of stuff, they cost a lot of money, and we just don't have that to invest right now. But we clearly have a problem that we need to address, and we as board members are responsible for kind of changing course. And I'm hoping that decisions like this are going to prove to be a turning point in Stillwater, and making that our district, kind of putting us back on course as a competitive academic district that I believe we can always be. So, that's why, so I will be supporting this tonight, in case that wasn't clear. Thank you, Dr. Hocker.
Sure. So when this began, I saw the merits in it, and I thought, okay, but what do I do? I represent people in the district. So I went around the district, it's part of just my existence, I'm here, there, and everywhere. And anytime I had to go somewhere, I went there early and I would just start talking to people. It's great conversations started, what do you think of this? And so I did talk to teachers, I talked to staff, I talked to parents and students themselves. I even went into the lunchroom at high school, and if I saw an open chair, I'd sit down and said, do you guys know what we're thinking about? And anybody, I'd introduce myself, and they would offer their opinions. It's almost universally, they're saying, don't do it. Lots of different, sometimes I say, oh, that's just a personal reason, you've got a flight that day, so that's you. But, but it all adds up, that's a lot of votes against it. So, I am going to vote no on the early start because of all the feedback I have gotten from our constituents.
Yes.
Simple observation here. I sincerely respect all of your opinion, that's what makes a great board. All of your perspectives are definitely one that I take to heart as well. One thing I want to note though is, the data there shows 38% of our female students have reported mental health issues. 14% collectively of our male students have reported mental health issues. 38% is a huge number. 14% is a huge number. The question is, why do we have a lot of our female students reporting mental health issues? There's a concern there. We know that just changing the calendar is not going to resolve all of our literacy problems. But if it does add to improving the mental health of our children, of course, and our staff, it's a first step. It's part and parcel of the process towards making sure that we have the academic excellence that we're looking for. There's so many things that goes into academic excellence, this is just one piece. And so resolving, finding that opportunity in terms of what are these different symptoms that we're seeing within our community to actually get to where we're going, this is one of it. And if the stability of our students are not there, you're not going to get to where we're going. And so for me, I will be supporting the proposal tonight. I see this from a position of experience amongst my own, my children, and seeing what is up there is very concerning to me. We can't have, it's our responsibility to make sometimes very difficult decisions as a board. It's not an easy choice, but as Director Petrie said, it's a pilot. We're seeing this as a pilot. Something needs to give, a change needs to happen. But I saw the mental health of our children, or our staff, or the academic improvements, which is back to wanting to be the district of choice for so many others compared to our other colleagues here in the Washington County area. We need to do something, we can't continue to do same thing over and over and over again. The number of, the percentages that are presented on the board will not improve if something is not done. So we have to listen to what we're seeing there. The unfortunate thing though is, at the elementary school level, most of us have kids, or I don't have anymore, but at least most of us here have kids, you might not see the benefit until you get to probably the high school. It might look like it's just, you know, every day, it just looks, it would look normal to you, but the benefit really is as you grow older. The process of eliminating all of those stresses, like classes and mental health issues, you will see the difference at the high school level, middle and high school level. That's where you would say, because that's where the challenge really comes in. It will look like business as usual for elementary school kids, it won't really impact anything. Maybe more of the parents, in terms of our duties, in terms of work, or maybe the activities that we put our kids in, but all of those adjustments can be made, but the focus really is the mental health of our kids. So the kids come first in all of this. And so for me, that's where I'm coming from, is to make sure that number doesn't continue to grow. Because guess what? They're going to take it into college, and that's where the real problem is. A lot of parents are sitting down at home, they get a phone call, the kid's gone. For me, that's where the issue is. Mental health doesn't start in a year, it starts from somewhere. And if we can find a solution to that, then I think we will not only be helping our families, but also our kids in the long run.
Anyone, yes, Jenna?
I, I love what you said about mental health, and I think that a really important part that, a really important thing that I learned from us talking about start times, was that when kids kind of look at this data, like, they might have a hard opinion at first, they're like, don't change your start time, don't change your schedule, why would you ever do that? You know, like, because change is hard, and I think a lot of people, you know, at first when they do that, they don't quite understand. But when Sam and I like talked to our United Council and we kind of gave them this, like, these statistics and these, like, you know, this would be good for us because, you know, it improves mental health and it does all this, they were a lot more on board. And I think if kids saw this data, looked at it, and understood something needs to happen. And I think if kids saw this data, looked at it, and understood something needs to happen, like something does need to change in order to support our students, I think a lot more people would be inclined to say yes, and say like, "Oh, yeah, like, that is a possible solution." And I think also what you said, it's like a pilot, it's something that you can try. If there's nothing to support it, if nothing works out, then nothing works out. But I think personally, like, I think kids, if they saw this, these data points and all this and mental health, and girls in our school, and just in general, I think a lot of people would say, "Yeah, something does need to change."
Thank you, John, I appreciate that. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the input. And I think one thing from the school board conference, I think a big takeaway was that student input. And I love to find ways that we continue as a board, the district, to find ways to bring that voice in in, in different ways, in a more regular and larger fashion, and so I'm excited for what that's going to look like. So, thank you, you and Sam, and everyone on the, on the council. And so I absolutely don't want to discount that, you know, one thing I, I'm looking at is, you know, I think, one thing again, I, I kind of hear is just the disruptions to families and the ability to pivot. And I absolutely agree, if something doesn't work, you have to change it, you know, so if this, let's say it gets adopted, which, Director Lowers, I mean, I'm going to support the will of the board. And maybe that is important, that we're going to make sure that we have everything in our powers to do whatever is necessary to make our school successful. And I know we're all here for the right reasons. But I know just having a consistency of schedule is really important for families, and, you know, especially as you're planning ahead and, and different things. And so obviously, I want to make sure that we find ways to make things sustainable, whatever, you know, the changes that get made now and over, you know, in the future, and there's probably going to be more. And so that's one thing I just want to be, for us to be mindful of, of making sure that we're looking at that and we're very, you know, and looking at what's going to be a long-term sustainable solution. And I apologize, I lost my other thought, but in, in the end, I, I think, oh, one other thing that I want to be mindful of, and again, this is anecdotal, but I think there's a lot of politics that, that makes up this decision from this change, is that, you know, I, I have the privilege of kind of serving as a mentor at the high school, you know, with, with some avid students. And it's a really awesome opportunity to engage with, with students that come from more diverse backgrounds and different socioeconomic situations. And I think, you know, one thing that I heard from them is that, you know, the employment aspect. You know, they're not working because they want extra monies to, to buy some new shoes, or, you know, whatever it might be, or go on vacation. They're working to support themselves, and support their families, and some, you know, some of the basic needs. And so I'm also very mindful of that consideration of making sure that students have a full opportunity to, to work and earn as much as they can for those, you know, for those students that, that really need that. And so, you know, that's just another consideration I have, as I kind of, again, using this. And again, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to have, you know, a safe place to share, you know, feedback and have these discussions, and I, and I hope that, you know, responsible civic, civil discourse is, is a good thing. And I'm really appreciative for, for Chairperson Sherman for helping to facilitate these types of conversations. So thank you.
This was an excellent conversation.
Yeah, that's a real, real good feedback. So when we switched this down south, students in high school actually were competing with the kids who were coming back over here for college for positions, so they, they had an opportunity to get jobs that they had to wait till school was done to begin with. So on the front end, it's better, on the back end, of course, you come to school a week earlier, so, but that's, that's the trade-off. So it works out.
Any other comments?
I think from my, you know, from my own perspective on this, and we can certainly just, we still have two action items, but I knew, and the, the, I appreciate the conversation. I'm glad that we had a respectful discussion with varied opinions, varied points of view, that's really important. I remember going through the process of, and I think a few of us were here, when we were hiring a superintendent. And I think for me, it was because I knew that we didn't have the answers. We needed someone with new ideas, experienced, experienced perspective, and this is an idea that I just don't see a downside in trying. And I, I just, I've talked to elderly, I've done my due diligence, I, I really have. I went out to community members, I've met many people that are opposed, but I have actually found many people that support it, and they see the mental health, and they see it in their own children, and in their neighbors, and in their friend groups, and, and so for me, I will be supporting this change tonight. I think we've tried to make concessions by listening to community members, by delaying it, giving the families a decent, more than decent amount of time to make some adjustments. And I just, I'm not satisfied with the status quo. And I need to be, I need to be a part of building something new. And for me, I don't look at this as, this is not going to be a magic bullet for our achievement issues. I do not think, that is not why I'm supporting this. I'm supporting this because I believe in professional development. I believe that it's not a perfect system of professional, professional development in our district now, but this provides the delivery mechanism to make it relevant for our teachers once a month. Every month, at a reasonable time, it provides our students those natural breaks that I really do think is going to impact their mental health. And so primarily for those reasons, I am going to be supporting this tonight, so. But I, I do appreciate all the perspectives, and I've appreciated the discussion and all of the thoughtful points of view. And I hope that just as we, at the board table, support a majority vote, and we move forward, and we work towards positive change, I hope that, I know that there are people in the community, specifically staff members, who have reservations. And I hope that those reservations over time will be eased, and that, that we will reap the benefits of a small incremental change like this, our students. I just, I can't thank you enough for being here, John. And the, and Dr. Porodny, your comments on mental health, it's something that keeps me up at night, and it's something has to change. And so if we can be a part of doing something to try to make an impact, I'm proud to be a part of that, so. Let's move on to the, we, we're still going to have to make a motion and, and do kind of the regular sort of business.
First twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes, for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Dr. Persermon, if I may, kind of off subject, but just around the mental health and the importance. You know, just a shameless plug, you know, Dr. Funk and I have a privilege serving on the Partnership Plan. And that's, there's been a five-year plan of helping support mental health initiatives. So I just want to give a shout out to all the work that's happening on the Partnership Plan that's centered around, you know, student mental health and wellbeing. So, you know, a lot of really, you know, the monies that we've gotten from the community and businesses have been really impactful, that go directly to helping students in the classroom and in school. So I just wanted to share that.
Absolutely. We have some fabulous community partnerships and nonprofits that are working directly with our students and families, and it's important to give those accolades where they're well-deserved. So we're going to start with the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, which you have in your board packet. And this has been, basically is maintaining the status quo of what we've had for the last few years. I always like to say it's the calendar that is pre-Labor Day, but has absolutely no benefit of people that might support a pre-Labor Day. It's kind of trying to be all things to all people. And I, I think that per the analysis of Superintendent Funk, I mean, you have said this, you'd prefer to go post-Labor Day than to continue with this calendar that's just kind of trying to be all things to all people. So the twenty-four, twenty-five maintains what we currently do today and gives families that time to plan for a change if a change passes. Well, a change will pass the board, either a post-Labor Day or a, a five-day earlier start. So this will give families that time. Are there any questions on the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar? If not, I would like to make a motion to approve this calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. Can I get a second? Director Loward with a second. All those in favor of approving the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Great, that passes humanely. And then we're going to move on to what we've been discussing this evening, which is the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. And there are two options to consider. There is a pre-Labor Day that we've been reviewing, and then we directed staff to look at a post-Labor Day start. So those have been what we've been kind of looking at. Again, we also, I want to say that we're approving two calendars tonight. And this is the, this is Superintendent's goal moving forward, is that every year, we're doing two calendars ahead, right?
Right, so next year, we'll approve the calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven, so people have time.
So that we continue to provide that stability for families to know what is happening in our calendar, and we're not waiting until the fall, winter. All right, is there a motion on this? Director Petrie?
I'll make a motion to approve the pre-Labor Day calendar that starts that third week in August, for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Is there a sound second? And I'll, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Neat. Neat. Okay, motion passes four to three. And we are done with the calendar discussion we're doing. So again, thank you for the discussion, and thank you to John for stepping up and sharing your voice, too. We love hearing the student perspective. And Sam, if you're listening at home, we miss you. So now we're going to move on to Strategic Direction B, which is foster a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment for all staff and students. We don't have anything on that. The next one is Strategic Direction C, utilize systems and align resources in an efficient manner to support learning. And I believe Mark Drummerhausen will be coming here, and it already is there, to talk Stonebridge, which we're in Stonebridge Elementary tonight, so it's fitting that we're talking about such long-term facility maintenance work in the building that we're in.
Deputy Chair Sherman remembers the board. I'm here to approve bids for the Stonebridge Summer Long-Term Facility Maintenance Project. This was approved by the board back in June with various projects. We do have three different kind of project bids that we're bringing forward here. This is the first one here at Stonebridge. Just to kind of highlight a couple of things, so we've been having different phases of Stonebridge in terms of renovating the classrooms. This year, there's looking at eight classrooms in the south side of the building. So if you go down the hallway, the south hallway, there's eight classrooms, which we'll be replacing the sinks, the casework, the ceilings, the upper wall walls, the chalkboards, and providing hot water to those eight classrooms. In addition, we're looking at replacing the ceiling and lighting in the hallways, the gym and the cafeteria. And then lastly is renovating the main office and nurses' office area to make an ADA compliant restroom. Currently, the restroom that's in the nurses' office is not ADA compliant, so we make that bigger, so that is ADA compliant in the nurses' office here. So that was a project, we have thirteen work scopes, came out to one point two nine million, which was under our bid day budget that we had proposed to you last June. So with that, I'm open up to any questions or comments that you may have.
We love the under-budget part, so that's, that's a positive. I always just have to say that I, when I came here to visit, this is before we started making renovations at Stonebridge, it was crazy to me that they had no hot water in their classrooms. And so you would come in from a cold day, or, you know, and you're just talking about, thinking these kids are washing their hands with this freezing cold water. So I'm glad we're getting hot water in the, in the building, in more classrooms, so. This is great, thank you very much. Any questions from the board? I'll, go ahead.
If we can continue what we did here, so we're here at nighttime, I've been here during the day. Right now, I'd be sitting with some sunlight on me and basking in that warmth right now. If we're going to continue that throughout the building.
That was not part of the project. I was saying when the building was built, so that is not part of the project, is the satellites?
I was told this was new.
No, I log it.
They were here.
Okay.
But when they need to be replaced, long-term facility maintenance, so that must supply this. No, no, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, can I get a second? Director Thielander with a second. All those in favor of approving this package, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mark, very much. Okay, now we're bringing up Paul Lee, our Executive Director of Student Support and Services. And now heading up our Policy Committee, welcome to Policy Committee.
Yes, thank you.
And so you're here tonight to talk about Policy 208.
Yes, good evening, Chair Sherman and the board of the board. So what I'm presenting tonight is Policy 208 for a first reading. The policy is Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies. The Board Policy Committee had a chance to review this at our last, at the last meeting, and had some discussion about it. There's some very minor changes, as you will see with the policy, and maybe you've already had a chance to review it. Though the, the two very minor changes were really bringing, bringing this policy into alignment with the MSBA model policy, which was re, reviewed in two thousand twenty-two. And this had been last reviewed in two thousand point one, so there had been a few little minor changes with that policy. So if there's any questions, we're happy to take those. If not. Yeah, it's right there. So, so the most significant changes, you can approve policies in two weeks, two board meetings. Okay, so that's, you won't have to wait for the third meeting. So that's the, the track out with subsequent legislation.
And just seeing that was to be discussed, that is, board, kind of in our last meeting, is how we, we have grossly outdated and redundant policies and glaring gaps in policies that we need. And so making a move to model policy makes sense. And then in this case, it really does make kind of getting through policies difficult with having to wait three meetings. So that will be changed. I do want to say that anytime we do bring policy to the board, we will be soliciting community feedback. Obviously, a community member can email the board, and Superintendent, or now Paul, on any kind of concerns they have at any point in time on policies. But we will have a business meeting, and if we are discussing it, even at a study session, I will ask for a comment on policy.
So the mechanism on that will be, like tonight, we had the open, what, open forum.
Yeah, public comment.
Public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So in regular business meetings, people can come and they can speak to policy. If we have study sessions moving forward, or work sessions, if we have a policy on there, we will put something on the agenda for public comment to that policy.
So. Embedded in the agenda, so it won't be public comment. It will include an opportunity for our community to, to that policy.
Just a quick question. Are there going to be the same rules for public comment for, if we do it during a work session? Like, will the three-minute thing?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be the same.
Okay, but it'll be just applied to comment on that policy?
Okay, thank you. And I think that keeps the community input, which we value. It keeps that active and in place, and, but it does so in a way that isn't slowing the business of the board down, which is what we're here to actually do, so. So I think that that's kind of the major change. If you have any comments, we can talk about them now, or you can email your feedback later after you consider the change to Paul, Superintendent, Policy Committee.
And then we'll bring the policy back for a second reading, if you two.
Great, thank you very much. And then now we're going to move to an action item on our school calendar. There were a couple new meeting.
School board.
School board.
School board.
School board meeting calendar. School board meeting, we've got too many calendars in start times. Yes, this calendar with all of our meetings and locations, we are changing the March fourth, one date to March fourth, and the other date until November seventh, which is going to deviate, one is a, which one is? Monday is the March fourth, and Thursday is November seventh.
Election.
Yes, and they're both election-driven days we cannot legally meet on Tuesday. So the locations are on the calendar, if there's a motion.
Make a motion.
Great, Director Thielander makes a motion to approve these minor adjustments. There's a second.
Sort of.
Director Helsenberg with a second. All those in favor of approving our school board meeting calendar, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Joan, I'm assuming that'll be eventually up on the website?
Yes. Yeah, I'll post it.
Thank you. Great. Now we are going to move into closed session. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute fifteen G point oh three. The governing body, the public employer, may by a majority of vote in a public meeting decide a little closed meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies, or developments, or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals conducted pursuant to sections one seven nine eight point oh one to one seven nine eight point two five. I will go ahead and make that motion to adjourn to closed session. All those in favor of moving to closed session, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We will move to closed session.
How do you go to closed session in open school?
Yeah, exactly.